...and believes she needs legal advice. She should pay the fees with her own funds. The city's money should be going to streets and drainage and hiring additional, and not hiring additional unnecessary legal advice. You already cut people out of the budget supposedly to...
And this is a point of order here, personal personalities, please.
I'm sorry, it is my turn to speak.
Ms. Hocky, one second, Mr. Shaw. I don't know if that point of order is appropriate, please clarify.
I believe Ms. Hocky is entitled to render her opinion.
I'm sorry for the adverb, Ms. Hocky, please proceed.
May I have a reset on the, since Mr. Sanderson was so rude as to interrupt me?
I'm going to go again to this, please.
I'm sorry, it is my turn to speak.
I'd like to have a vote on the objection.
Okay, so we have a vote, is that correct, Mr. Shaw?
Ms. Hocky is a citizen wishing to speak. I believe that under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, she is entitled to speak and give her opinion.
Perfect. Ms. Hocky, enter the argument, please proceed.
The fact that you don't like what I'm saying doesn't mean that it's not true. You all, Ms. Winger, you took a number, and others on council, took a number of positions out of the budget last year, supposedly the fun, streets and drainage. Now you're hiring, unnecessarily hiring an attorney, and when money should be going to the streets and drainage. That's all I have to say. And I am so upset, Ms. Winger and Mr. Sanderson, that you have, that you were so rude to interrupt me when it's my time to speak. And the fact that you can sit there, Mr. Sanderson, and raise your eyebrows at me just is disgusting.
Okay, next, Ms. Sandersen. Next, Ms. Sandersen, Dr. Mike Flynn.
Dr. Mike, Dr. Mike Flynn, 1111 Anderson. Of course, in the need and timing of this agenda item. After a previous attorney was let go with the assistance of Mrs. Winger, Mr. Shaw was brought in to replace him, and additional cost the city of $4,400 per month, or $52,800 per year. Given the council's aggressive action to cut city costs, I find ironic and hypocritical that Ms. Winger would now be willing to waste taxpayers' money for still another attorney. I think the citizens of this community are owed an explanation as to why this action is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Ms. Casey, I can tell that's a brief, I think it is.
Yes, it is. Robbie Casey, 144 Castle Hills Drive. Good evening, Mayor and mayor. I have to say that I'm totally disgusted with this bringing in another attorney, bringing in this costing. The citizens, we're paying for it. You're sitting up there using our money. It's time for you to retire.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Mr. Shaw.
When I read this, the first thing that comes to my mind is, how does this benefit the citizens of Castle Hills? How does it benefit citizens of Castle Hills? That's the important thing. We got attorneys, it was previously mentioned, through pushing bias among the side. We got rid of our other attorney. I understand that our current attorney is very capable and at a father's table. I'm guessing that somebody just didn't tell somebody what they wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. That is all we've got time to do. Does the council have any comments? Mr. Ford? Did you have any comments?
No, I don't have, but I think I've already made some comments with my objections.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanderson.
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez? Turn the microphone on.
I have none.
Ms. Winger?
Just like to point out that this is not the first time the city of Castle Hills has hired an employment law attorney. We've done it before, Mr. Shaw was on council, and it's done on top of that, Mr. Rappley has hired an employment law attorney as well. So, when the need arises, we have to have the expertise.
For you?
He's employed.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Fordy, yes, sir.
I believe it's the first time the council would have brought in an attorney who had one of the things that had a personal relationship in the past, and offered him without any prior consideration to the council, from the council, to be employed without prior notice of the council. And in this kind of way, I think this is the very first time this has ever happened. I think in the past, we have certainly hired employment attorneys, generally that's done through the offices of the city manager whenever he's in favor, that's what I'm saying, rather than a regular council.
Thank you, Mr. Fordy.
None, correct.
Okay, Mr. Gregory?
No comment.
Okay, so, Mr. Gregory, I can appreciate your desire to have some transparency because I honestly say that the city would need to be almost up here to have an attorney that's handpicked and brought in. If there is nothing going on, there would be no reason why we can't have a RFP, or request proposals, and try to bring in the best possible attorney for a job. I think we can develop a rotation here in Castle Hills of providing the very best services. I see this as no exclusion. Additionally, I did receive the text from the municipal board today, and their list of recommended lawyers for employment law, unfortunately, Mr. Sanders, it's not on my list. We had Mr. Frigari, which we've used in the past, Mr. Brian Henry, who we continue to use, William Howard Logos, and Nick, or Matt, Matt Magg, those are the ones that they said would be our agreement, and they also advised us with, advised me to share, to be very conscientious of actions that we may be working on that could potentially put the city in a precarious situation, essentially providing more risk, and more likelihood, and more money spent. That means that I would encourage council to operate with the utmost transparency and vote out of it.
Do I like the call for the vote?
Yeah, call for the vote on Ms. Winger.
Second. My seconded.
A second, we're going to a roll call vote. Mr. McCormick, how do you vote?
Vote on hiring an attorney?
Yes, sir.
Nay.
Nay, Mr. McCormick?
Nay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sanderson?
Yay, yes.
Yes. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes, three to.
That's impossible.
Okay, next.
So, I have the move three from the Russell Court of Law, number 1906-11A.
Mr. Mayor, we're, on the agenda now, we continue on the agenda, beginning with the invocation, like allegiance, Susan Thomas, and agenda items, et cetera.
Okay, please move the way down by a second. You want to move, what, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanderson?
Basically, item number six, and I'm moving to re-assume the original.
Okay, so you want to move item number six to the next one?
That's correct.
Okay, that's a motion by Mr. Sanderson? Do you have a second?
My seconded.
Objection, consideration?
Objection, Mr. McCormick, yes, sir.
First of all, the council is already about the Robert Ture's order?
Yes, sir.
Which addresses this specifically, the rights of the citizens to speak. Under Robert Ture's order, the citizen has no such right to, page 648 of Robert Ture's order, beginning with line 10. Yes, the council may not have a right to speak. If they are disrupted, the presiding officer has the right to silence them or directly resilent. If after, if the presiding officer fails to act, after free of place, any member of the council can stand up and call for a vote on the offending citizen. If the citizens are found, if the council would be out of line, then the citizen can be ejected. If the mayor decides to do it, come on page 648, just like I said.
I have another point of order, please make a motion on a resolution, you're not talking about it.
I am talking about the resolution, I'm talking about the fact that the resolution is already assumed under Robert Ture's order.
Okay.
The second point is, that there are provisions in Robert Ture's order to deal with continued disruption by members of the audience. Members can be ejected either on the mayor's order, or on the order of the council, or the council is brought to a vote by, by members of a separate call. Finally, the other issue is, that the legislature, recently passed legislation, which specifically gives citizens the right to speak in meetings of this sort. So it's improper for us at this time, the steps that are out of order with, with the government of Robert Ture's order, they're, which we call rebutted, and which are against state law, which has recently been passed by our legislation. It's appropriate for us to rescind this, and proceed to rewrite, revise, revise the resolution, which takes into account the facts of Robert Ture's order, and the legislation recently passed, which specifically addresses these questions.
Thank you.
So I object to considering this, other than as a residual.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. If I may offer some background on what exactly is transpiring, so this vote was passed June 11. I personally felt that this is a pretty substantial resolution, because it basically takes the power from the citizens, you all, away to speak at the council meetings, and says that you can only speak at the end of the council meeting, after everything's been voted on. Realizing that we're here, and you're building, to serve you, I do not see that as appropriate, and I execute my one ability, one of my few abilities as mayor, and ask council to reconsider. The motion Mr. McCormick was talking about is House Bill 2840 filed by Representative Penauz, which effectively makes it legally binding that cities have to hear from their residents, or from people labeled by D.C. If I understood, that's correct, September 1st.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I believe that the local government code provision, that permits the mayor to object to a resolution and call upon the governing body to reconsider that resolution, supersedes the sections of Robert Ture's that Mr. McCormick has been citing. I do agree with what has been said both by Mr. McCormick and by you as mayor, in regard to the adoption of House Bill 2840. I have asked Mr. Rappley to present to each member of the governing body a red line of the resolution 2019-06-11, I believe A, that that would incorporate into the resolution the relevant changes that would bring the resolution in compliance with the terms of House Bill 2840. Mr. Sanderson is correct that House Bill 2840 becomes law on September 1. However, I think it would be relevant for the council to consider that House Bill 2840 was passed by the House of Representatives by a vote of 138 to 3, and by the State Senate by a vote of 31 to 0. We were not aware of the passage and the enactment of this law at the time the council acted on the resolution 2019-06-11-A at the June meeting. Among the council, the C, the changes, basically, as you said, the legislation does call for any member of the public wishing to speak on, to speak on any agenda item, that, that opportunity must be given at a meeting before or during city council consideration of the item, and that the city council may not prohibit criticism of the city council, including criticism of any act, commission, policy, procedure, program, or service. That subsection does not apply to public criticism that is otherwise prohibited by law. Those are the many changes that the legislature included in House Bill 2840, and significantly, that this is a very material change, because until this legislation was adopted and becomes effective, becomes effective, the OBE Act does not require the council to hear comments from citizens. Castle Hills has historically provided a citizens-to-be-heard opportunity, as well as citizens-to-be-heard on individual agenda items. If this resolution is not adopted in the format of the red line I have circulated at this meeting, it becomes law anyway, it will govern the proceedings of the city council anyway on September 1. It strikes me as an appropriate thing for council to get ahead of this, and go ahead and adopt this resolution as of now, and lead the way along with citizen participation, and respect the action of the state legislature in adopting House Bill 2840.
Mr. Mayor, I move, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council rescind Resolution Number 1906-11-A, and substitute in place Resolution 2019-06-11-B, I guess it is.
At least I already have the, the move, I already moved, you have to reaffirm it, so...
You wanted to reaffirm, I'm sorry, Mr. McCormick, you have one second. You want to reaffirm, what was that, Ms. Casey?
Well, I, excuse me, I already have, I realize that it's one of the fundamental laws, and I would like to reaffirm, September 1, nothing stops us from workshops, whatever kind of law, obviously, go ahead, make sure we're compliant with state law, of course it counts. So I'm still reaffirming the original vote on the word in front of 2006-11-A, I did that previously, I haven't had a chance to go into it, but...
Okay. If I understand, I get verification.
Well, hold on, one second, Mr. McCormick, before we vote, I would like to actually have the opportunity for citizens to speak on this. Mr. Shaw, that a vote?
That's very appropriate, but I, I heard Mr. Sanderson say that you wanted to move up item number six, I heard Councilwoman Gonzalez second that, and then I heard Mr. McCormick's motion, so I did hear a motion as second to reaffirm, maybe the city secretary did. I don't know.
I did hear his vote to reaffirm, and you kind of got set up. If we can proceed with the citizens to be heard, and we can go with any other motion you might have. First on the list is Mr. William Long. You have in three minutes, take the name and address, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is William Long, 502 West Woodlong. The, thank you to Mayor Trevino for informing the citizens of Castle Hills and surrounding communities that there is a chance...
Can you get the microphone, please? I'm sorry, my understanding here is...
My apologies, let me start again.
Steven, what was your address?
502 West Woodlong, San Antonio, Texas, 7212.
Oh, that's not in Castle Hills.
Correct.
That's all right.
Thank you to Mayor Trevino for informing the citizens of Castle Hills and the surrounding communities that there is a chance that free speech will be censored. Texas Governor Greg Abbott disagrees with the notion of moving citizens to be heard to the end of the meeting. I am in awe that you would even attempt this move, considering the governor signed HB 2840 recently, that will become law on September 1, that would supersede your local law if this passes. It states that citizens should have the right to speak on agenda topic immediately after the agenda item is discussed, and should not have to wait until the end of the meeting. The phrase should always be citizens to be heard, not citizens to be ignored. Citizens to be heard should be the direct way for individuals to weigh in, weigh in on important topics considered by the city council. Again, I thank Mayor Trevino for his leadership and for alerting the public that this was happening, and I would like to recite a quote from President George Washington that Mayor Trevino shared, which made me so determined to be here tonight. "If men are to be excluded from offering their sentiments on a matter, which may involve the most serious and alarming consequences that can invite the consideration of mankind, reason is of no use to us. The freedom of speech may be taken away, and dumb and silently may be led, like sheep, to the slaughter." Lastly, the following messages for the citizens of Castle Hills that are often ignored and marginalized, which are the citizens who are more comfortable speaking in Spanish. Ciudadanos para ser escuchados es tu oportunidad para decir, decirle, diríte, directamente a los funcionarios electos de Castle Hills sobre asuntos que son importantes para ti y tu comunidad. Now, I will translate. Citizens to be heard is your opportunity to address Castle Hills elected officials directly about the issues that are important to you and your community. Gracias por su atención. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Long, Mr. Roy Calazos Reina. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of city council, my name is C.D. Roy Calazos Reina, I live at 1730 Del Rayo. And as a public administrator by trade, I thought that it was very important for me to come and address this body on one of the founding principles of American democracy that allows for citizens to participate and have a vital role in the way that our local governments address their necessary needs to ensure that they sustain a safe family unit, that they maintain economic vibrancy in their households, and that they are able to have a vital and participatory role in local governments. You know, that there's not very many communities like Castle Hills that hold a catalysted opportunity in such a small community to actually allowing citizens to come and have face-to-face interactions with members of this governing body. And I believe, as a public administrator and a private citizen, that those rights should be given to this community, being that it's so small, there's a great, great sense for an opportunity of collaboration by citizens in this governing body. And why this governing body would like to paralyze that opportunity, paralyze that collaboration, and paralyze the ability of free speech upon its citizens is appalling. And much less now, at a time when the Texas legislature has taken action and has sustained this measure, I applaud the efforts of representing Panavas from the Rio Grande Valley, an area of the state that I so proudly represent, and I applaud the efforts of Mayor Trevino for bringing back this reconsideration, because right now, we do not stand at a resident point in American society to be shutting people up. We stand on a precipice in this country to allow people to speak out, and Castle Hills holds a very, very keen opportunity in that because of its population size and the ability for people to come and stand at this podium and address this balance. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of this governing body, for allowing people to be heard, and not allowing people to be continually, continuously casted into the shadows of this small community that all of you represent.
Dr. Mike Flynn, I live at 111 Anderson Lane. With respect to the efforts of certain city council members to curtail the ability of other citizens in this community to freely express their opinion, I'll quote President Harry S. Truman, who is a little bit more centric than President Washington, basically said, and I would address this to certain members of our council, if you can't stand it, get out of the kitchen. And I think some of it's time for some of you guys to get out of the kitchen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for protecting the right of Castle Hill citizens to be heard.
Robbie Casey. Robbie Casey, 144 Castle Drive. I think that, I'm so happy that we had outside to see what our council is doing to the citizens. I'm so happy that not just the citizens are suffering from you all. I think the whole world knows that you're wrong, and I think that Dr. Flynn said it just right. Get out of the kitchen, leave the diocese, let us bring someone else in that cares about the citizens and about the city, and not just want to be a dictator.
If I remember correctly, we had Mr. Sanderson's motion.
Please, J.R., I signed up.
Um, I don't see if I consider it, it might be the last opportunity for you to speak, please.
It said three and six.
Okay, please.
Bonnie Hapke, 111 Anderson. I want to thank Mr. Gregory and Mr. McCormick for last time trying to get this resolution changed. Mayor Trevino, thank you for bringing it back to the table, and the other three of you, you're shameful, shameful people. As I stated the first time, this item was brought to the table, again, I think it's shameful that this council should attempt to stifle public comment and involvement prior to decisions being made about the city, which we all call home.
Thank you, Ms. Hocky. So again, we have your motion to reaffirm.
Motion reaffirm, is that what you're about to second?
A second by, by Ms. Gonzalez, turn the microphone on, please.
My seconded.
Was Mr. Sanderson's motion made before Mr. McCormick's motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Okay, so we have it first on Mr. Sanderson, a second.
I would like to say something here, I understand that everyone wants to speak, and we want to listen to what you have to say. However, our first meeting, in May, my first meeting, we were here till 12:00 midnight. People were jumping up in their chair and screaming out all kinds of unkind words, and we couldn't conduct business. We had to come the next day for two more hours, and we still shelved a lot of items. So, I didn't have any problem with people coming up and speaking, we're just doing this until September, and you can speak at the end of the meeting. Today, we're really looking at the budget and a few other things. So, the problem here is that people don't stay on the topic, they want to insult the people on city council, and that's not conducive to city business. And that's the whole reason behind this item. So I really feel like the people in here know who they are, and they need to think about their actions, and actually, this was only done as a timeout, to allow us to be able to move the business of the city forward. And you can speak, you most certainly can, and you can speak. Thank you so much.
Here, here.
I would like to follow up to that. I think the idea of a timeout, as Ms. Winger brought, and Ms. Gonzalez brought, is insulting to the residents of the city, and that I would ask to be here. I would agree that we could use a little bit of reform, and we can be easier conducted, and I'm doing my best to do that, but I don't believe that a group of grown adults that are the taxpayers and the reason why they're here should be put in a, quote, timeout. I would hope that, especially, aside from HB 2840, I would hope that my colleagues up here would vote for what's right, so that citizens could be heard, and we can encourage a positive participation in our government, because that's the beauty of a city like Castle Hills. Aside from that, I would say that the near idea that we're going to put residents in a timeout for two months is questionable at best. That being said, I'll proceed with the roll call vote. Mr. McCormick, how do you vote?
McCormick, how do you vote?
I'm going to vote aye, and I would like to explain my vote.
Mr. Shaw, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
I think it's essential for the citizens to have a right to speak. Mrs. Gonzalez makes a good point, Senator, and that is that the speech needs to be civil. The idea of citizens standing up on their chairs, or standing up and screaming out whatever they like to say, is just simply going to break. However, there are rules in Robert's Rules of Order to allow that to be corrected. The problem, as always, has been one of enforcement. And people have to recognize that when they're out of order, you probably know when you're when you're out of order, really, no kidding. You've got an idea, because you stand up and scream out some insult, that's not really a thing to do. And so you shouldn't be surprised if the mayor comes down on you pretty hard and makes you sit down and then fly out. But if you don't do that pretty quick, you're going to sign yourself outside when you get the walls. Because that's what, that's what the Robert Rules of Order allows the mayor to do. There is a civil statute, a criminal statute, which makes an interruption of a verbal meeting of this sort a criminal offense. And as a last resort, the mayor could use that against somebody who stands up out of order and screams out insults or otherwise interrupts the meeting. Now, while we didn't want to hear everybody, if we have a agenda with 25 items on it, and we have two or three people get up to talk on each of those 25 items, that's going to have at least two hours to have already overrun the meeting. That's not really reasonable either. And so it's important to consider whether what you have to say is really all that much, whether you can get it said in less than three minutes, because you probably can. You can probably get almost any complete sentence out in less than 30 seconds. So that's my problem. So I vote against the, the affirmation of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Sanderson.
I vote yes.
That's a yes. Mrs. Gonzalez.
I vote yes.
Yes, and Miss Winger?
I vote yes, and I'd like to explain my vote as well. Mr. Shaw has pointed out that we have historically allowed people to speak on all agenda items. That began in 1999, when my husband became mayor. It did not happen before that. I was attending meetings for two years before that, when we were not allowed to speak. And I know precisely why he opened it up, and I'm very glad he did, and I hope to get back to that. But, but as Mr. McCormick pointed out, all of this business of having to tell people how to behave is very tiresome and time-consuming. This is not something that was brought up because we can't take the heat. I have been sitting here taking the heat. I have no problem taking the heat. I agree that if I can't take the heat, I shouldn't be here. That's not the issue. The issue was that we had two elections where people have repeatedly told us, and way more people that are in this room, Mrs. Gonzalez herself, went over 500 votes where she talked to people. Nobody has ever done that before, so she has set quite a record for other people to follow up, that I haven't been able to get to that many homes in one election cycle. But I think there's quite a few, both the year before and this year, and repeatedly I was told by people, "You have to do something to stop this, because it's intimidating, and nobody wants to come to meetings." That's why we're doing it, for the time being, because we were prevailed upon by the majority of citizens. And when I say the majority, the majority is indicated by who voted and what the results of the election were. So that's why I'm voting yes.
Okay, Mr. Gregory, how do you vote?
No.
No.
And I'd like to give a brief.
Please, thank you.
Law that is going to be going to effect in September. Very clear. City Council may not prohibit criticism of the City Council, including criticism of any act of mission, policy, procedure, program, or service. This subsection does not apply to public criticism that is otherwise prohibited by law. So there is a prohibition already on books of public criticism that is prohibited by law. All new council members have received from Texas Commissary League, a copy of this document, and it is under citizen participation. This is why I am pleading to people directly on the calls, it says. Also, if speakers take too much time or engage in personal attacks on council members, it may be necessary for the mayor to cut them short. Council members are expected to be polite to citizens appearing before them, but there is no requirement that they subject themselves to intimidation by rude speakers. When you yell, scream, holler, and call ladies to the council members, you are, you are telling somebody else in the city, "I just don't want to show up." Most people don't want to come to the council meetings. They may have one item in their whole lifetime, but they've come to talk about it. But it's, it's a brawl. People will stay at home, and then just say, "I came to discuss this in the city hall." I'm voting against this, because I think it went too far. I think the code that comes into place in September is reasonable.
Okay, so that's a previous vote. The reaffirmation passes. Next to the end, I, so I guess we can start with number one, Mr. Shaw?
No. Evocation, pledge allegiance to citizen Congress on non-agenda items and consent agenda. And I am one of you business.
Perfect. And vocation, we don't have any right here today. Pledge allegiance. But are you, are you part?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a conservative republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our home.
Thank you. And that's, are you a part, Jim Lowey?
Yeah. Yes, me too.
Okay, next we have citizens comments on non-agenda items. We have Dr. Mike Flynn.
Dr. Mike Flynn, I live at Marwood, Anderson Lane. I would like to address my actions during April City Council meeting, which we alluded to in some of the discussion here, in which I continued to read comments added to a petition supporting our current city manager, even after I was told to stop. I suspect that members of the council were offended by my comments, and some citizens have commented that I behaved in an uncivil manner. However, the comments I have read were not mine, but those the community submitted to the petition that I believed needed to be heard. In that regard, my citizens are better, my, my actions are better construed as civil disobedience rather than insubility. I am not a rabble-rouser or activist, but I do not believe that employment with the City of Castle Hills should serve as a jobs program for friends of City Council members. I believe that Miss Winger is actively trying to undermine and discredit our current city manager to unethically place her friend Diane Fowle in that position. Hypothetically speaking, once Miss Fowle is in place, what other friends of Miss Winger could be put in place to fill vacancies, such as that of the finance director? Given that Miss Fowle would owe her position to Miss Winger, based on our past history with Mr. Gregory, wouldn't be surprised if street repair priorities get adjusted to favor certain members of their, or their financial donors. Given that, it is a civil reslope from cronyism to outright corruption, I think my little display of civil disobedience was justified. Regardless, a lack of civility is merely a symptom of a real problem with our body politic. That problem is a lack of comity. One source defines comity as an atmosphere of social harmony, while another defines it as when an act is performed with vote uniformity, limited litigation, and most important, to show courtesy and respect. While we can respectfully disagree on whether to issue a bond or pay-as-you-go is the best way to repair our streets, we should all agree that there are accepted defined practices for how those goals should be accomplished. When our elected officials lie to us, misrepresent data, make unfounded accusations using secret email lists, manipulate public hearings, try to circumvent city ordinances, use their position to gain favorable treatment from themselves or their friends, or attempt to limit our constitutional right to free speech, their under, their actions undermine the comity of this community. Consequently, they should not be surprised if their actions of others, their behavior is less than civil. Mr. Mayor, I apologize to you for disregarding your responsibility to manage City Council meetings and ignoring your authority to do so. It will not happen again. However, I hope you understand and appreciate the rationale behind my actions. Thank you. And I want to address Mr. McCormick's comment about some of the agenda items that go along. Well, part of the reason these, these discussions go so long is because we have so many, many inane items on the agenda, like removing tables and taking down plaques. Really? Those need to be agenda items? Thank you, I'm done.
Robbie Casey.
Robbie Casey, 144 Castle Drive. I'm glad that we'd have a chance one last time to say something, speak on non-agenda items. Several council meetings passed. I, I think that Councilman Gregory was ill and wasn't here, and that was when I brought up the conversation that he and I had on the phone about the, and at that time, I asked him if they had a petition, and he said, no, he didn't, they did not have a petition. He didn't know anything about a petition. And then I found out that the council has met, members of the council have met, and they have a, they have a petition, that they're going down the street having people sign. Thank you.
Ms. Casey, the legal's ten on Castillo? Okay, Ms. Castillo, the legal, have you seen? We will proceed with the consent agenda. Consent agenda, I'm, I'm sure anybody can have a motion for consent agenda?
So move the motion.
So move on Mr. Gregory. Second by Mr. Sanderson.
And maybe that's a motion, Mr. Gregory, motion to adopt the consent agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
All right, sure. What's the motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to behead the auditor for this, as I would like to.
I represent, well, the motion is to accept the fourth quarter investment report.
And the, the consent agenda consists of two items, accept the fourth quarter investment report, accept the first quarter investment reported. So then, your motion is to approve the consent agenda, which is to accept those two reports. Mr. Sanderson, is that your second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Discussion. Discussion, all in favor of discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Winger?
Ms. Winger, I'd like to have this.
All in favor, please proceed.
Okay.
Ms. Winger?
I have to discuss.
The reason that I'm going to ask for this to be set aside on the land of the audit is that this is an issue we spot up in the audit, and I wanted to be able to ask the auditor about it.
Can you still bring up items regarding?
You can do what you want, of course, but I have to follow the voting for, put out the information, so.
Well, wait a minute, we have one agenda item here, and that's accept the fourth quarter investment report. Isn't that, isn't that available here? Don't we have that before?
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Sanderson asked a question. The answer to Mr. Sanderson's question is yes, even if this motion is adopted, councilmen still inquire during the presentation by the auditor if they have questions about the investment report, is they are reflected in the audit?
Okay, Mr. Winger, do you have any questions, then? Miss Gonzalez? Sanders?
No. No questions.
Okay. If we don't have any questions, then all in favor? All votes? Four to one, Mr. Winger, descending votes. New business, for the presenter?
Yes, sir. I think the legal is inside the chair, although he's, and, but I'll study his line of argument.
Thank you so much. Presentation acceptance of the fifth quarter 2018 audit and the annual financial report prepared by Ahn Shon, Von and Associates, D.C. Just here, roughly.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Sir. Mayor Debbie Fraser from Ahn Shon, Von and Associates is here to provide and present the 2018 audit. This item was stapled at the June 11 meeting, and so this is her return to provide you an overview and give you the details of the audit, so.
Thank you, Debbie Fraser. Thank you for joining us again.
Good evening. Actually, the third time I've seen all of you, so. I would like to start out by telling you all that if you do have any questions about the details of the audit, or the, you know, want to go through this audit page by page, I would welcome that. I have gone through it with Mr. Gregory before the June 11 meeting. You did receive an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, and that opinion basically...
I see a little bit of a bit of a...
Okay. Can you hear me now? The opinion basically says, after adjustments, that your financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct.
No, I need to go.
Okay. Whoops, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. This basically says that after adjustments, your financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct. I would like to point out that this year you had six adjustments compared to your prior years, in which you've had quite a few, I would say...
I think you're going to need to do 30 this morning.
Twenty-one. You've had 21 turnovers in past years or more. This year, you've had quite a bit less than that.
Quite a bit less, I'm sorry, quite a bit less than what?
Twenty-one entries.
Four, four, yes.
Yes?
You said four with another bet?
No.
Six.
Six. So you did, again, receive an unmodified opinion. On pages three through 10 is basically your NDA, which is written by us, but reviewed by both your city manager and Mr. Gregory. If you turn to page 10 and 11, this is your statement of net position. This net position is based on a full accrual basis. It's slightly different than how you budget, number one, and number two, you see your fixed assets, all of your debt, your compensated absences, and your net pension liability, which is supplied by T.M.R.S. And you also, this year, will see your O.P.E. liability, which was also supplied by T.M.R.S. Gatsby 75 is due this year, so you'll see a prior period adjustment on your financial statements for that liability. So your total assets at the end of the year were 18.1 million. You had deferred outflows of 452,000, and I'm on page 10. The deferred outflows consist mainly of post employee benefits that were paid in advance, and then pension liabilities that were paid in advance. Your liabilities were almost 2.9 million, and then you had deferred inflows, which were property taxes that were paid in advance and unpaid property tax. You had a net position of 11.8 million. Three and a half million, or almost 3.6 million of that is unrestricted. Now, again, that's the full accrual. You see all of your debt, all of your personnel liabilities, O.P.E. and net pension, and then you also see your fixed assets. That's typically not the way you budget, so if you turn to page 13. This is your balance sheet of your governmental funds. So you have several governmental funds, like your general fund, restricted fund, and then you have some total bond major funds. The total assets at the end of the year for these are 12.4 million. Again, no fixed assets and no deferred liabilities. Your liabilities, deferred inflows of resources and fund balances, your total liabilities were 448,000. were 448,000. Your total deferred inflows of resources, 3.7 million. So you had total fund balance at the end of the year of 8.1 million, almost 8.2. Of that, your unassigned fund balance is 3,876,745 dollars. That gives you about 6.4 months of operating expenditures covered in the general fund. Instead of looking at page 15, I'd like you to turn back to your budget versus actual on page 31. You budgeted to bring in almost $7 million, growing 6,977,000, $52,000 short of what you actually budgeted. Your expenditures were 6.3 million, and you all actually budgeted 7,698,000, so you were a favorable variance of 1,386,000. Your excess of revenues over expenditures was 615,796. So your fund balance went from 4.6 million up to 5,219,000. I'm going to skip to page 42. I just want to point out your pension liabilities and related ratios. You, as a city, are 92% funded, 92.5% funded for your TMRS or your pension liabilities. You have a liability on your financial statements of 1,353,000. The GMOA says that anything over 70% is considered good.
I'm sorry, you're fading away. Where's that divide?
The GMOA says that anything over 70% is considered good, and you're 92.5%. But I remember that... Of course, yes, yes.
Why not?
No, no, that's been noted. If you turn to page 44, this is a required supplementary information, and this is for your other posted employment benefits. In TMRS, you have supplemental debt benefits, so this is what it represents, but it represents the supplemental debt benefit for retirees only, so people who have retired from your city. And that liability that's been set up is 211,868. We derive the pension liability and the OEPH liability from your TMRS actuarial studies that are performed every July, so you probably have your next year's report there. We did have a couple comments during the audit. A couple we made verbally, and I'm going to go over one of them that we made verbally, because it has to do with your minutes. You know, at the end of the year, you're sworn up to date after minutes, and we read through the data of the report, so we read minutes, but they have not been approved. The other thing is your internal control policy on Gatsby Statement 68 currently does not address the review of employees' census data reported for TMRS employees, and what happens is you don't prepare this actuarial study, it's prepared by TMRS, so it's very important that this information is accurate, and this has been on your comments since the pension liability started over four years ago. So we would just like to see you develop some type of policy and follow through every year to make sure that the census information is correct. We found errors in this, if we look at your census data, what TMRS has, you may have an employee that was listed as a female, but was actually a male. So that employee has to call and get that corrected. You can't correct it from your side. So we just want the estimate or the actual study performed by TMRS to be accurate. Again, we brought up the fact that you have the assist accounting system, does not have a lot of capabilities of interfacing with court system, building permits, and other items to track on standard accounting system. The court system and the building permits are tracked on HIN code, and other items are tracked on spreadsheets. Anytime you have spreadsheets or you have information that goes from one system to another, there's always a way to go here.
Quick question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, from my experience back at the council, you mentioned that the assist system and the way this is being utilized also potentially is open for fraud?
Well, it's more like a QuickBooks system, so, you know, QuickBooks or Assist has more opportunity to change items within the system rather than using the double entry accounting and go through and have an audit trail for those adjustments.
Which is more efficient, safer?
It's safer, and it's just a more robust complex of base system. There's other systems, like STB, those types in code, which is primarily the one that's used in this area.
And by business, by the...
No, that's a great question. I think we have some comments on the Public Investment Act. We didn't have the fourth quarter prepared timely, the fourth quarter investment act, which is our investment report that you just approved, and to see that that within...
So the fourth quarter is the first quarter? You mentioned here that it was the first quarter, that was the fourth quarter. So after that, everything was okay?
Before that, everything was okay. So the fourth quarter report that we made was as of December 31, 2018. The first, second, and third quarters were all appropriately prepared, signed, and submitted, and the fourth quarter was not approved. Again, you didn't have any accounting personnel at that time.
I'm sorry, I think you...
You did not have any accounting personnel for the first, you know, full-time accounting personnel for the first, well, you still don't.
So you're saying in the period that we didn't have accounting personnel, everything was okay?
No.
Okay.
So the quarterly report that you just reviewed and approved was December 31, as of December 31, 2018. So that report, we would like to see approved and prepared and gone to council by March 31, 2019. So, you know, 2019, you really haven't had any accounting staff. You have people coming in and doing minimal stuff to keep you afloat, but there's a lot of things that aren't being done. So we need to, you know, that's an important personnel that should be employed around city.
But again, the city manager is the chief financial officer anyway.
If not an accountant? Yeah, I mean, he's responsible to the account, yes, but I don't think he's the chief financial officer.
I'm sorry, do you remember where I go on your case?
I would say it's probably, you know, not the chief financial officer.
That's what you would say?
But I do have thirty years of lobbying experience as a city local government, so I'm not, you know, I do have a little that I acknowledge.
Quite a few years, or decades.
That is something that I'll...
I'm sorry, I should...
And then we recommend that your investment policy be approved one senior.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So considering that we haven't had anybody in the position for some time now, would you say that Mr. Bradley has done a decent job of maintaining?
I haven't really looked at your books, but for the new year, I mean, that was what I was hired to do. So I think you're keeping up with your basic items like filing or preparing checks. Laura comes in, does payroll, your check accounts payroll. I know that Laura has come in and done your bankups, and I think she's done through March. But to be honest, I have gone in depth and looked at your books. I think you're straight in the surface, but you do need some accounting personnel in your guess.
So would you leave your findings or...
Yes. And the other problem is, as Mr. Gregory and I have discussed, accounting personnel for governments, they're not a dime a dozen right now. It's a little difficult to hire them and find a good one.
Are we ready for questions?
I'm ready.
Okay. You know, in the years past, there's always been a form that council members were given by the audit agent deciding in case we do have anything. We didn't get it this year.
I did interview council members. I'm sorry, I did interview council members while I was out here.
You interviewed council members?
Yes.
Well, I wasn't interviewing my name back then. And I believe I did this, I'm back, I'm sorry to be received. Yeah, I think you missed. You also mentioned here that you requested certain representations for management, and where is the representation letter that no advises or the scope of your work would be? It's not in here.
Well, there was no scope letter in the representation letter. That's not what a representation letter represents. The engagement letter was signed in December, and that would give the scope of our audit.
So you say, you know, this is in your, I guess you called it the management letter, that you...
The management's letter.
Okay, right on the management.
Sure.
Requested certain written representations by the manager, but you say that you're including a separate letter. I don't know if a separate letter is, I don't have Ryan signs the letter. Why don't we have?
Council members signed that letter. We always had it in that.
So you have not?
Well, I know you have copies of it, that's...
You may have copies of it, but you have not signed that letter.
I'm not saying we signed it, but you have copies of it.
That's a copy discovered.
Bradley.
Okay.
I mean, that's really not my job to provide it. He's the, he is the designated person and he, and management, and he signs the letter and sent it back to you. You should request a copy from Mr. Bradley.
Okay, so now, under the Public Funds Investment Act, it says, that I just raised this before, that the investment officer did not sign off on the first quarter investment report. Is that correct?
No.
So does it have to be correct?
It should be correct, yes. They won't be corrected when it's signed off. I mean, that's, again, I would not sign off on that. It would be, Mr. Gregory wants to sign off on that.
Again, is whatever you're saying, that you experienced delays in completion of our audit to obtain the signature documentation, why do you think you had those delays?
You had no finance personnel. Well, that's your basis, that you had no finances.
Okay.
It's actually hard to do an audit when you don't have finance people here to prepare documentation. The last bit of information we were waiting on did take a little bit of time to prepare.
There, I think you referenced before page 41, where it says actual expenditures may not legally exceed appropriations, and actual expenditures did exceed appropriations. Is that correct?
Actually, that'd be why I had the checks.
So what are we doing about that?
You need to monitor your budget to actual. But again, you didn't have any budget here that probably prepared by your management because I believe your finance person left and whatever of 2018. So we haven't really had a full-time, I'm sorry, is that closed?
Yes, we had a contracted person who was here all full-time for most of the year from March until December.
So on page 25, you say the city did not maintain their letter of credit, and that was the same location that you made in the 2017 audit. So I guess that is sort of correct in there.
That is actually a mistake on my part. You did provide that when I met with you. So is it on the state?
It was provided, and it was renewed now through January of 2020 as well.
June 11, you provided the day. So is it correct?
It is incorrect.
Oh, yes, very good, but you know, correct.
And all of this has gone through Councilman Gregory's or Treacher's. Please review this, you've been notified that this has been secured through our decorations as well.
So in such a way, if we have some modification, we would have had an assert, if we would accept the thought, is that correct? Basically, we would have to have an assert that we were interrupting on this and we accept it.
Yes, you provided it to me the day of the last meeting that I was here, and yes, I will go back and forth to that.
And then the other thing is that on page 24, you say investment officers sign quarterly investment reports, submitted the audit procedures in this area conducted. This is the same commentary that was made in the 2017 audit. So is that been fixed, because it says it wasn't prepared in timely fashion?
It was not prepared in timely fashion.
So basically, that's two years worth, you obviously had the same problem. This is the 2018 investment...
We had the same thing in 2017. Okay, well, I don't have the 18 or 17 in front of me to look at, so I couldn't answer that right off the top of my head. But yes, you did not approve your investment policy. That was written up in the government's letter, as well as preparing the fourth quarter timing.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just to note that this budget, FY '18, was prepared and adopted by a different city manager with a different council, so, thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bradley. Ms. Dallas?
I have no questions.
Any other questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Sanderson?
I have no questions this time.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes. Do you compare our results this year to the grade issued by the commission with the general entries? Thank you for your discussion. That's an improvement.
It's finally improved from prior years. Last year, when we came, you did not have a finance person in. You have a temporarily, temporary finance person, but you hired Laura Fakin. She came in, and we had come to do the audit, and the works were not in shape to do the audit.
How does it compare to the year before that? The 2017, 2016, you have any information?
I would say I have five and a half pages of general entries that year, and I have a page and a half this year. So...
Page again?
A page and a half this year compared to five and a half the year 2017.
Five and a half pages of discretionary from 2016?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It was quite a number.
So this is a page for improvement over past years?
Yes, yes.
For past years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When was, was the 2019 bill budget, it got available to pay for building purpose and things like that? It might have been approved in 2018, but the budget was not implemented until 2019. When was that going to be available to spend?
In 2019.
So if there were workings to be done, replacing air conditioning and that sort of design, is not proper to be before beginning of this year, which the money is appropriated?
I would adjust the budget. If, I mean, if air conditioning goes out, then you want it to get worse close, you want to adjust the budget. If not, we think that it meant that...
I understand, but talking about the whiskey, these were discretionary and not emergency prepared.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the amount, the cost of hiring a good finance officer for a small city like ours?
I think you're looking at 85,000.
What's that?
I think you're looking around 85,000.
About 85,000? And you have, you didn't have like the work it is now for finance people?
Yes, and actually, I had talked to Mr. Gregory about this, and you might call city shirts, city, said, well, they can hire, try and hire a couple people for about six months, and I believe I gave you a couple names. And I believe I knew a couple of names, city areas also working. So it is a tight market right now.
So since, since we're working, they would find a qualified person with the usual precedent?
No, no. A couple of our cities have hired people that aren't experts in governmental and external, right?
And you know, they do.
A couple of our cities have hired people from the outside, what we consider the outside. So CBAs that aren't experienced in governmental accounting. And then have tried, we help them with the first couple of audits. And then they're usually pretty good after that. So Mark Ridge did that. And they had a very good outcome.
Okay. Uh, what are your thoughts?
It took them three quarters of the year to finally get, get to that.
I'm sorry, I have to talk over you. Can you tell me anything?
It took them about three quarters of the year to get to that point. Where they hired, they hired somebody besides a, a trying to governmental accountant.
Okay, now, by my understanding, what you said, that I kind of figured, my understanding of what you said was, you hired somebody from outside CPA, and you tried it for some period of time while you were looking for another finance person, is that right?
The city of Mark Ridge hired a person that wasn't a CPA that normally weren't in governmental. They were CPA that worked outside of governmental. And then they came in and took, it took them about three quarters of the year to find them. And then it's taken her about two years to get up to speed.
So they, they did, Ryan wants to find somebody to fill that position from outside the unit of city financial?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, our monthly reports have, I have a monthly report, month and a half back. Can you tell me when it's possible to complete a monthly report? Like, say, for a month of June, when can we do a monthly report or a month of June? I can't use.
If you had a finance person?
I'm sorry?
If you had a finance person?
If we had a finance person.
I would say, so June 30th, your next council meeting in July is what day?
Eleven.
I would not expect one then.
When?
You, you just don't have the information.
What information is?
So for instance, your bank statements. Some of your bank statements come in timely, some of them come in the tenth or eleventh. So it would be very difficult to view a statement that had like some ounces as of the eleventh. I can't think of any city that has short number of transactions that are able to pull that off.
And there are still getting reasonable for making available something with date for the previous one?
They, yes, it could be.
So it might not even be available by, say, the fifteenth of the month?
No, I would say a month and a half.
Month and a half. So our, our monthly reports are always going to be a month, a month and a half back?
Or the next, the council meeting after the eleventh.
Well, it would be.
Your agenda comes out four days, five days before that, four days? So for instance, post-hereditary, you usually get your stuff packaged. I'm assuming three or four days ahead of time.
Yeah.
So if you're talking six, when the, when the finance reports will be, need to be made. So you have a year-end and then six days, I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay. So we'd be looking for a month of, if we're looking six weeks back at least for the month, for the monthly report?
I think that's good.
And all those are presented every month?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Do we have any questions? Senator Gregory?
I want to point out, well, I'll have our audit sign. Please tell the council the impact of Mr. Uristi's new policy of not paying the property tax in one month, some special gap of ten months. Does it have any impact on our physical stability?
It doesn't really have that much of an impact because you do have a six months of assigned fund balance or an assigned fund balance. So, so that's not, you know, that, other cities, it may impact quite a bit more. But you have a very good six months in reserve to spend the next month or the next.
I always think, Councilwoman, I've been praising her for all these years, spending on the city. Always tried to have a substantial reserve for the city. And, uh, thank you. I'm going to make.
The GFOA, and I know I said this to both of you, we were on the council last year. You know, they, they, the GFOA recommends four to six months in an assigned balance. Fund balance, you guys have over six months of unassigned fund balance. And that was also with the transfer of the four hundred thousand for your community street and repair.
Thank you. I'm going to, have you sent the fiscal year 2018 audit and annual annual report?
You have a first one, Mr. Gregory, a second one, Ms. Winter. Let me see, if we have any citizens here on this one, sorry.
That's okay. Again, I want to reiterate that if you have any questions, you're welcome to call me. If you want to sit down and go through this page by page, we're always happy to go through that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. First one, Mr. Gregory, second one, Ms. Winter, all in favor? All opposed, motion, has the unanimous. Okay, uh, item number two, discussion on action on continuation of the city in Castle Hills Passport Acceptance Facility. Mr. Rappley?
Uh, I want to find out if Councilman Gregory has brushed the time. We need table this till July, if we need to say.
Well, we'll go through this. All right, okay.
I know you have certain questions and stuff.
Okay, so table this till July, Mr. Gregory, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the motion, Mr. Gregory, second? Second one, Ms. McCorville, all in favor, okay? unanimous, perfect. Okay, item number four, consider an act upon, or consider an act for improved wooden tables and chairs from council chambers to ensure there will be no more competing meetings at the rear of the chambers during council meetings. All the tenants, when seated, must sit in a rosewood chair as provided, which are not to be moved except, except the wheelchair chairs. Mr. Sanderson?
I think that it's pretty well, and the recent climate, uh, there has been, for a while, some time of competing meetings, if you will. I think that it is appropriate for citizens to, in places, but as provided, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Schnell, you got something to say?
Uh, just a second to this. Because I would like to make a comment if this is going to move on.
I haven't heard a second yet. Second name? Uh, second one, Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Schnell, please.
Mayor, I'm very concerned about the language in this proposal. Because I do believe it is something that may be violative of the Americans with Disabilities Act. There could be people who come to our meeting who leave a table to rest their arms, to take notes, to do something like that. I appreciate the exception for wheelchairs, but I don't feel that that fully takes into account the issues of people with disabilities. There may be someone in our community who comes to our meeting who cannot sit in one of our normal chairs or need some other kind of seating, who may need to stand up and walk around rather than sit for extended periods of time. And I do think that this needs to be reviewed more thoroughly to be in compliance with all the elements of the Americans with Disabilities Act, including maybe reasonable accommodations for anyone with disabilities so that they are not hindered in participating in or attending the council meetings.
So this is where specifically the wooden tables factor, because that's not the clue for me to using folding tables if they are part of the EBA specifications. So I'm not really familiar with the EBA stuff, because that's myself. And I fully understand taking the points for anything there. This is strictly about the wooden tables and the chairs factor and nothing more.
Mr. Sanderson, have you been told with Mr. Rappley regarding the daily use of the chairs? If there is any?
No. Mr. Rappley?
Give me one second. Everyone asked Mr. Rappley outside the stage room, and it's obvious. Mr. Rappley, are these tables used aside from council meetings?
Well, yes, I mean, almost on a daily basis at different departments or myself utilize staff meetings outside meetings. I mean, they're used quite a bit.
Do you have any specifics?
Uh, well, I have to ask me there, there's different departments that have meetings there. Uh, I actually, sometimes we actually had two meetings going on at the same time where I use the phrase conference room one and two because that's what we have, our members utilize. So there's, like I said, there might be a point where there's two meetings going on at both tables that you utilize. I know that one in the back is extremely heavy and, you know, I need to have a table put in and out because of the time we utilize for meetings. And we also, we had a meeting with outside entities or agencies. Like the other day, we had a meeting with the city of San Antonio and our engineers. Uh, we took up that entire table from that standpoint, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. McCorville, good to help?
Yes, I am, and I'm going to tell you about what uses are made of these tables. These two tables at the rear of the council chambers are the only comfortable rooms we have in the city. The city office has other comfortable rooms that are really available for groups of more than three people. You can get three people in those quarters, but you can't put more than three people in those close quarters. Here, the only equipment that is available for Mr. Rappley to manage a staff meeting with office department is for example, he does that on a regular basis. This is the only place, for example, that's available for a prosecutor, his assistants to meet with their accused or their, their, take hold or whoever, that they need to go to court on Thursdays, and they're used essentially during those hours for those purposes. This is the only place that's available for meetings, as Mr. Rappley pointed out, with outside groups of people. We have several meetings here with Tech shop and with people from San Antonio. And this is the only place that really is available to do that. There are other alternatives that could be had to control seating in the back. The problem with wooden tables is that it's very heavy tables. They don't fold up. You can't pick them up and walk off with them. They weigh some, shave some out. And every time we pick them up and move them, we take on a certain amount of liability for the people that are involved and the people that might be standing nearby. So the alternatives might be, for example, simply to stack the chairs, they do stack up for you, those that are not on rollers. And put up something that says the tables are reserved and not to be stepped on during council meetings. That's all that's wrong. The tables would still be available for people, persons in wheelchairs or people, say, with a broken leg or someone who are developing, and keep them from sitting in normal chairs. You can get one of those chairs taken out by somebody nearby, and they can sit in one of those, those chairs if they need to. So taking them out is not really a practical alternative for the city as a whole because we use them on a regular basis, they're used every day. The police department uses them on a regular basis for training purposes. And then we need to, here, on a fairly frequent basis. Because I've asked that question, but they didn't have other facilities that they can use, like the government's room in the back and the, whatever the council chamber is back there that we use from time to time. But they do use these tables and chairs on a regular basis for meetings. Every department does, except for our public works, I believe, and fire department because they have facilities their own in the building. But our other people use these tables on a regular basis. So taking them out is not a practical solution. There are other more practical solutions that resolve questions of having competing meetings on them. Again, in every case, it's going to be a matter of enforcement because there's nothing to keep people from sitting in the chairs or between the chairs in front and behind each other for talking back and forth, between the chairs or across the road. So it's going to be a matter of enforcement that can be done back there as well as, again, in the seats in the, in the rows.
Certainly, there's nothing for revenues from swapping out these, these folding chairs with the wooden tables from the back. I don't see how that would substantially impair anybody.
Mr. McGorver, Ms. Gonzalez, you have anything? Ms. Winter?
Yeah, um, you know, I haven't actually thought about this until Mr. Sanderson brought it up. And it has been extremely disruptive, and he's right. The fact of the matter is, other council chambers don't have these tables. We don't need them. The tables can be moved up front so that they can be used for, you know, the people who sit up here. They can also have meetings up here, makes no difference if they're in back. Or if they want to have meetings in the back when the council is not in session, you can put folding tables back there for that purpose. So that remains the problem. And I think that, you know, Mr. Sanderson is correct. What he's going for is to be equal, to have everybody treated equally. If somebody needs a wheelchair, they do not need a table. And they, of course, can come in in a wheelchair. We always have that accessibility EBA requirement. So that's not the issue. The issue is not people with disabled. We have a lot of disabled people here who have no problem living, sitting in the regular chairs and never have.
Well, I'd say the folding chairs up front is going to disrupt the court. The court needs this facility up front for processes on a weekly basis. They have hundreds of people in here, and they need to have a place where they can carry out the court. Because these white tables here are perfect for that. Big tables in the back, we've got people disrupt that procedure.
Thank you, Mr. McCorville, Mr. Gregory.
They're lucky to kill two birds with one stone by simply having a folding designation of the two dead ones in back of the meeting, reserved for citizens who need the American Disabilities Act. And once the meeting is over, you can take it down. And that sort of deals all problems, hopefully satisfies the American Disability Act, which I'm, I have to admit, I'm really glad to go down that road because I saw my university, they had one funding the federal government, the American Disability Act came into place. Because you got some from the federal government, you got elevators in every building, a big university kind of thing, what you got. So let's make the tables reserved for those who have disability during the council meeting. That ends it.
There's no requirement that the American Disability Act for tables to be there in the first place, which is why nobody else has them.
Mr. Schnell, any comments?
The concern I have with the American Disabilities Act is that changing something that has become the norm in this room, in this council, for this community could raise a complaint by someone with a disability, people with disabilities who really don't want to advertise it. And we need to respect the fact that there's people with disabilities who want to keep their disability private. And if we, if, if changes are made to the physical layout of this room, it might involve someone who is forced to reveal a disability that they'd rather not reveal. And, and so the concern is, if it ain't global, why are we trying to change it to some extent? And also to make sure that we are fully open and accessible in all respects to anyone who wants to come to our meetings.
There's a question. I'm assuming that, taking that as your official suggestion to council, that we should not proceed with this. Is that correct?
It would be my feeling that unless this, until this issue is vetted out further, perhaps with someone who has a, a management experience in evaluating physical layouts of buildings and meeting rooms, to make sure that whatever is done is compliant with the EBA, that this actually be deferred until that expertise can be tapped.
So, uh.
Mr. Gregory, this is the honor suite.
I think I just wanted, uh, we can motion to deal with Mr. McCorville, a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? All votes? Uh, table feels great too. I would just like to add that in my professional, that what I do today, I do accommodations for hospital and the industry. And I've seen firsthand that the Otis is on the building, a third floor management company to provide all kinds of accommodations. And I think that for us to have to do these accommodations regularly is kind of tease. And I feel like we're kind of getting in the weeds of managing things that don't really need to be managed when we have other more pressing issues. That being said, I do, I've seen, part of the reason that I did the work that I do is because of people who will often file lawsuits if there are not proper accommodations. And I feel like we may potentially put ourselves in that kind of a situation. My last question, Mr. Schnell, would be if a council member was operating. My last question, Mr. Shaw, would be if a council member was operating and promoting, um, against your recommendation, does that present any personal liability?
Uh, uh, Mayor, the members of government are on the bank in their official capacities have some, a, a level of qualified immunity. Um, that immunity, however, does not protect the city itself.
Okay, perfect. Um, does anybody else have any good questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gregory?
Go for your point. Once again, our TML, to be covered by qualified immunity, the official acts to show that the action fit, one, was discretionary, two, was within his authority to make, and three, did not violate the liberty of status or constitutional right of which a reasonable person would have known.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. I always say that is safe, sorry, especially for something that's not an issue, but, um, Mr. Dallas?
We, we could leave the tables back there, but I think it would be best that we reserve those tables for people that have a need to be there. You know, if they have a disability or they have some type, some type of need. Well, we're dealing with the same issue that Mr. Shaw raised because then you have to go around and you have to check to make sure that somebody is disabled. Why, they don't want necessarily to do it. I mean, why, unless they have disabilities, if we manage to say that you're ready to choose.
Mr. Graham, I respectfully disagree and correct you. You would not have to go and verify somebody's disability because that would actually be, um, something that you shouldn't be doing, it's illegal to possibly do. But that being said, um, if anybody else has any comments, then if not, we'll vote. Uh, we'll do it as a vote. I'm sorry, you got me. Enjoy your last one. Um, citizens have been heard, this is over, for two months. Uh, Bonnie Hoppe. Okay, uh, Dr. May Flynn.
Dr. May Flynn, on the next line. The effort to remove wooden tables and chairs from council chambers is just a mouthful. Apparently the authors of this item, believe, members of the public using those tables and chairs are taking the spotlight out of them. But perhaps I've seen various actions afoot in which the hypothetical meeting location is the headquarters of a revolutionary group of highness citizens that must be prevented from forming insurrection, insurrection at all costs before this is too late. Even those costs may be taken in such drastic action as to remove wooden tables and chairs from council members, council chambers, do you? This is simply absurd. This, as I was, you thought the issue of all the time wasted in so many city council meetings, this is a prime example. I guess Mr. Sanderson can't find anything more significant to raise and have to justify its existence by coming up with some kind of, and this is a good thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, we have Robbie Casey.
Robbie Casey, one four four, Cassie, I'm sorry. My sentiments are exactly the same. This is the biggest waste of time I've ever seen. I mean, it's like you're treating, you're really insulting the citizens. You're gonna put some time out and now you're gonna make us sit in a row and you're gonna remove the tables and then you're gonna check to see if someone has a handicap or next you're gonna change your diapers.
Okay, Mr. Frank Hall.
Mr. Shaw is correct, it's time to restart this, there are attorneys sometimes. Uh, I said that, yeah, I've sat there for years and the reason I do is because those particular chairs are more comfortable for me, my back and my leg, but who cares? Uh, I find it interesting, we've been here thirty minutes talking about this issue and I haven't heard one thing from anybody standing up out there, everyone who had meetings are gone. So, the other thing is that, I've been sitting back there since this council has sworn in and the previous council, or, Mr. Mayor, you never maybe once or twice gavel to ask the people in the back to be quiet. You're constantly trying to shut this lady up because she keeps getting filled all the time. It's no longer a kind of, it's ridiculous. I mean, come on, what's next if you have to raise your hand and go to the bathroom? I mean.
Okay, and that is everybody. Um, we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, maybe the motion, hey?
Yes, it was a boring.
And I moved and we, um, put the reserves on the labels at the back to prevent them from being set, uh, around during the council meetings and requiring people sit in the chairs unless they have a disability and I think that's something we can put on a reserve side, reserve for disabled, uh, citizens and then, uh, the officer at the back of the room, who's gonna do it right now, can, well, we said a big deal like it's necessary, or we feel like it's necessary, or we even feel like it's necessary. I think that, that solves the problem. I think this, this is a solid idea with a good, let's just put a sign back there to say reserve for disabled citizens and, uh, go from there. I don't think there's any way we're gonna police citizens talking together in the seats. I think that has to be done from the chair if it, if it becomes necessary and I think that solves the problem with the excessive talking.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, all in favor? All votes? Amendment fails. So we're going back to the original. Um, I believe it was a first by Mr. Sanderson. We have a second. A second by Ms. Winger, all in favor?
Mayor, or it was a second by Mr. Dallas.
I'm sorry. Uh, so first, Mr. Sanderson, then one is for Dallas, all in favor? All votes? Okay, motion passes.
May I ask a question?
I can get your microphone on, I'm sorry.
None. Did we have a vote? Because we believe we had a vote under the screen.
Can you, uh, reduce your question a little?
Yes.
We had a vote, I believe.
Can you use your microphone a little?
We had a vote, I believe, on number three, correct?
Yes, ma'am, there was a roll call vote.
Yes. Ready to do?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, we have, um, consider an act upon, or consider an act where wall class awards certificates and certifications issued to anyone in public areas within Castle Hills City Hall. Only photographs on walls should be those of former mayors. Mr. Sanderson?
Right, that's all, this is reserved for the, uh, for the city, non-political accomplishments and, and plaques and, and that sort of thing, I'd agree with you.
Correct.
Second. Okay, we have a second on this one here.
We have a clarification.
Um, I don't think, Mr. McCormick?
Okay, this says, consider an act where we've all flags, our certificates and certifications issued to anyone, but that doesn't say what we're concerned, we're talking just about council chambers, we're talking about the whole building, what are we talking about?
Uh, Mr. Sanderson, any further?
I believe it's all public areas.
I'm sorry?
All public areas.
All public areas. And if you say issued to anyone, does that mean the certificates that are, that are issued are posted on the tab of the city, like for example, the black flag in the back that lists the former council members or the black over here that lists the council members who were serving when the, when the building was bought, are those things gonna be okay, believe where they are?
Yes, that is, you can't, you should not, you should have individuals. So.
Sorry?
These, those matches you're talking about are not issued to individuals. They're really.
So we're talking just about the big flags at the back that were issued there?
Those are all, uh, both ones too, of, um, personally aware of that following the discussion.
Okay, and as, as a handle, I, I agree with that, that those two flags are out of order. Uh, I would point out that if they were posted during the election campaign, if they were posted in the building during the, the election, they're just possible issue of violation of election regulations. So I think it's appropriate to reflect those two down.
I didn't mean to do that, I was just moving to go ahead and then we're with them, that's all.
I'm sorry?
I'm just moving to some of them and that said, then you went back to our original.
Okay. If that's all, if that's all the faith you've served, Rob, let's proceed with them.
Well, that and the fact that, that we shouldn't have such flags in the future.
I'm sorry?
That and the fact that there was just a ruling that this is prevented from happening in the future, so.
I think that was clear from Mr. Sanderson's comment, that they were talking about flags that were issued to private citizens and not flags that belong to the city. Is that right, Mr. Sanderson?
So these flags right here, they're not, these bars over here, they've been here for some time, they're, they're issued as, apart from the city, I think those are something because those are, this is just anyone, this is too individual.
So they're individual persons, we're talking about.
Okay, so clarification, uh, we have quite a few, uh, awards, flags, recognitions to our individual police officers.
Those are all private areas, it's not public areas, so if you, do they not have public access?
In the hallway. There's two, uh, blast cases on each side and they have awards to our officers who have others against drunk driving and for the accolades that officers have earned throughout their tenure here at the Castle's Police Department. Is, are those issued as well?
They should be the police department.
So good clarification. I just want your clarification till we have a chance. Mr. Sanderson?
So it was not the intention of this, of this to go ahead and then process, no, only those that are in public areas.
Okay, um.
Okay, but these flags only, in the hallway, we're talking about, can they end their way outside and tell them dispatches, everything under this screen?
Yes, sir, that's what I was asking about.
Okay, if these are posted by the police department to recognize their, their outstanding officers or officers that have received accolades from the public, I don't see what they're, what trial there should be with that. If some private citizen or some, someone fully on his own, but post some important video document or another, I don't think that's appropriate. I think if they're posted by, by the department to recognize their officers, I think we should allow that.
I agree.
Okay, I just want your clarification, if that's the case, I imagine we'll need to amend this item because as a reason, we would take away the officer's recognition as well.
Yeah, we have an item for it, so accepting police awards and, et cetera, in the hallway.
What was that?
Awards posted by city departments.
One second, Ms. Winger has a comment?
I don't think that they should be in council chambers, that's, that's, that's the problem.
Well, the ones posted by departments are the ones that are gonna be out in the hallway there, right? I don't see a problem putting them up.
I don't see a problem.
Okay, neither do I.
Okay, so just to clarify, because I feel like I have lots of people in the audience at most, um, we're just removing certifications, recognition, awards to people in this room.
That's right.
Okay, so the officers will be able to remain in the, where?
Office service, administration, may all, all that would be, would be decent.
Okay, do we have an amendment to that?
Of course. So look at the, whatever you said, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I think the clarification has to be that what you were talking about, Mr. Mayor, was flags that are issued by the department and.
No, posted by the department.
What?
Posted by the department, in this case, we're talking about the Higginson community way, we're talking about a flag issued by others against Trump president to an officer which is posted by the police department.
I got that, I got that. And, and all I'm saying is that, that, that Mr. Sanderson's point is that they have no business being in this room and also no flags that are simply to individuals, anyone that has nothing to do with the department. That's what he's talking about.
It, it's, it's, you know, the department was one of the, who was, is on the test of the department, these facts are here, just put up by individuals.
Yeah.
So they're not, they're not awarded by a, a city or just.
Okay, and I read you say, we're gonna.
Okay, I just have one more clarification here. Now, the police officers have their four values on the wall. Is that okay?
No.
That's okay.
If it's not by the department, that's okay.
Okay, so.
About the department.
So just items issued to individual people in this room, so the only two would be effective are the two back there, correct?
The only two.
Okay, perfect. If somebody can get that amended, we can vote and, yeah, but.
Okay.
We need clarification, uh, Mr. Shaw, uh, should we make amendments, or you can do this?
Someone, your main, your initial motion was to adopt the language as word number item number five. The discussion we just had indicates that the consensus appears to be to adopt a different motion, so an amendment specifies exactly what the council wants to do about the plaques and awards on the wall, this, I guess in just this room, from what I just heard, would be appropriate and necessary, um, and so there would be an amendment, it needs a second, it needs discussion, it can be voted on, and then the motion is amended, it can be voted on, understanding that if there are citizens who have signed up for item five, we do need to, uh, let them be, be heard this evening.
Okay, then I'll, I might not read you say, was it a permit, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to give the council a resumption to prohibit certificates issued to private individuals from council chambers and council prohibit certificates issued to private individuals from public areas, except that departments may post award certificates if they feel that they're, that they're reflected well on the city department. Is that reasonable?
I second it. I would, I would actually like to amend that, I think you need to delete the word private because, because an argument could be made that when they were posted, if you pointed out that there was an election issue here, that you, they could be argued they were not private individuals, but rather public individuals, so that's the problem. We need to delete.
I agree with you, I would, I would prohibit those, I think those are prohibited under the election, election act.
Right.
Because I think they're an ethical violation when they're posted in the, in the city hall during the election period. I think they're a violation when they're posted in the city hall while voting is going on in the building and so I think there's already a law to prohibit individual certificates from public persons.
I understand. I just like, I just would like to amend your amendment to stay individuals, not private.
Okay, we, we, we need a little bit more of our procedure procedure. First, Mr. McCormick, um, you said approve a resolution, you did not say amend Mr. Sanderson's motion, so I would ask Mr. Sanderson and, um, Ms. Winger, who made a second in Mr. Sanderson's motion, would you be willing to withdraw your motion and allow Mr. McCormick's motion to go forward? I am willing to withdraw my motion. Ms. Winger?
As long as the word private is, then maybe yes.
Okay, Mr. McCormick, would you reword your motion?
I'll reword my, my motion as Ms. Winger suggested, to leave individual.
Thank you. I second.
Okay, so we have a first by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Winger, and public discussion, thank you.
I can my hand up.
I'm sorry, they think that would be too, Mr. Mayor, please.
There's one other room which are plaques, presentation pieces on the wall.
Community.
The community. And I can't, I know one of them, of course, was for a former mayor, but I don't know, I can't recall what the others were for. But to me, um, I, I don't know whether they would be accepted or not, but.
That's not really a public area, but, I mean, that's, that's sort of using the lock and key for the whole park, uh, I don't.
I would say by definition, it's helping people live in there.
Wow. Yeah, they have, they'll have to, they'll somehow wander over to that room. They'll have to get out of that room, they'd ever relax, cycle, either person is on the path.
It's also used during during.
Well, if we were just, if we were just leave what we said to begin with, that, that this is all flags issued to individuals in public areas, not posted by departments, that was the, the change that Mr. McCormick said he wanted to make.
Okay, so on that note, um.
There's a call for a vote.
I'm gonna have a sit. I'm going to have citizens speak real quick.
Right.
Um, let's see, all right, this is number five. We have, uh, Dr. May Flynn. I, I would just like to add, we spent a, a short amount of time on something that's not really pressing to the city, it's kind of an example of us spinning our wheels and not making a huge impact for the citizens. On that note, Dr. Flynn.
Hi, Flynn, hold on, hang on a second. Um, Mr. Mayor, I've got a very few more. Really, I'm a little just pissed at concern here, and my time requested this discussion. This is a topic I just want to say, pathetic. Maybe the alternative to the item ten, it will look better, including your minds and predecessors' accomplishments and recognition of their service to the city. In reality, their efforts to lift themselves up by literally taking down their predecessors only makes them look more imperious, petty, and vindictive. With that in mind, we wish to change the name of this body from City Council to Imperial Council. Thank you.
Okay, um... What was that, Ms. Dallas? We still have citizens to be heard, we can't talk without them yet. Um, Robbie Casey? I, I can't tell if it's a six or a five, so who did say anything, you know?
I'm Robbie Casey, went forward, Cassie, I'm not totally agree with Dr. Flynn. This is just sick, because someone that has worked very hard to earn a plaque should be able to put anywhere they want in this, in the public, uh, Castle Hill so that the citizens, who may not go in every room, but go into the chambers, could see it. Why, 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 trying to take something away from people that have worked to earn an award?
Okay, Mr. Frank Hall.
Frank Hall, one twelve, General Mar. I had a lot more to say until the second I clarified, because I was thinking, are you kidding me? Taking the lights down and all the way out there to belong to our police department, true agents. I'm very glad that Ms. Wager clarified for Mr. Sanderson what Mr. Sanderson meant, you know, myself, and... Secondly, after that, we want to go auditing these meetings, thanks all. Uh, time is, this has been forty minutes, and I have heard what citizens end up racing out there. Get them out of here, thank you.
Okay, that being said, we have a discussion. This council, I'm in Congress. Um, how about I start, Mr. Gregory?
Not working.
Ms. Wager? Do you have any comments? Mr. Gonzalez?
Call for the vote.
Okay, we had called the vote by Mr. Gonzalez, a second by Mr. Reformat, call in favor? Do you have, Mr. Sanders, we actually have a vote, we have to lie on the record, is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I can't remember the amendment for the last one. The amendment as stated by Mr. Reformat and seconded by...
Ms. Wager.
Ms. Wager, all in favor? All opposed? Pass, Mr. Sanders. Okay.
Another question for the cities. Could you please tell us what the vote was on number six? No.
Okay, um...
It was three, two.
Number six.
Three, two.
Okay.
Yes.
Announced by council, there, uh, Mr. Reformat?
My only members, congratulations, council, I'm sweating about forty-three minutes, what's the market, three hours?
Um, Mr. Sanderson?
None.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm going to be adjourned.
We have a motion for, uh, first, uh, Gonzalez, second by Mr. Reformat, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, uh, the, who's, it is eight oh nine.